Susan Springman.
Here.
Bill Random.
Here.
Chris Elner.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Here.
Aaron Moran.
Here.
Okay, first thing we have confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, and online availability.
Yes, I can confirm that. The draft agenda was published in the Wanakee Tribune on March 28th. The final agenda was posted on March 28, 2019 at all three village, official village locations. The final agenda and meeting packet were made available online on March 28th, and all public hearing notices for the meeting tonight were published in the Wanakee Tribune on March 14th and the 21st, and notices were mailed to property owners on March 18th. Didn't sound like a script at all, did it?
You did great, thank you. Okay, first item, or consent agenda, would anybody like anything pulled from the consent agenda, or look for a motion?
Number three pulled, please.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion then on the others?
To approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Motion by Joe Zitzelberger.
Second.
Second by Phil Williams. All the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Could you guys speak up?
Sure, sorry. So you know, item three was pulled off the consent agenda. So we'll be discussing that. Should we do that right now?
Yes.
Okay. So we have approved resolution approving the carry forward of unexpended 2018 appropriations. Joe?
I'd just like to get a little bit more info on what those specifically are, and I guess, more importantly, how that process works.
Yeah. So, I think you can see the specific amounts on the resolution.
Yep.
But the way that the process works, so there's some of the, or actually, most of them are what we consider ongoing carry forwards. So, for example, elections and assessor contract particularly, which are the big ones, we budget kind of a set amount each year for those, saving up for, like, for the elections, primarily for a presidential election year, and for the assessor contract, for when we need a revow. So we'll be tapping into that one in 2019 when we do the market study.
So those are items that literally, really, they move ahead each year?
Right.
To some extent.
And then, so we'll be spending down that assessor one, not all of it. I don't think the contract is quite that high, but we keep that pot of money so that it kind of smooths out the budget over a period of years. And same with elections, because some years there's only two, and some years there's four, and the presidential one is more expensive. Similarly, some of the donation ones, or other program-specific ones, if they don't expend all of that, they are able to carry it forward to the next year for their programming. So that would be the park donation purchases, Wanaboom, dementia-friendly, and Live From The Park, Creative Economy. Again, that's sort of similar to the donation one where if we have Creative Economy revenues that we don't spend in one year, we carry it over for that initiative. The Capital Outlay and the Village Center, they had budgeted a certain amount in 2018, and some of that, some of their strength equipment and things, they were not able to get purchased by the end of the year. Also, they wanted to get a water softener and a micro scrubber, whatever that is, something for the floor. So they're planning to, and I think they've already purchased most of that, or are ready to purchase it in 2019. And then, the only other one on there is the Clerk had carried over some money to do a software upgrade of our records management system.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Let me do them.
To approve the resolution.
Okay, motion by Joe Zitzelberger, second by Bill Random. Any other comments? Excuse me, called a question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I just have it. Public comments, is there anyone here who would like to address the board on an issue that's not on the agenda for this evening?
I've got some, Chris, written.
Okay, we'll go with those first.
Maria Pat?
Maria Pat, 1000 Wexner Drive, thank you for already doing my first thing, which was to speak up. There are too many times people sitting out here can't hear you. Second of all, I think that as far as our grocery stores go here in town, the potential, I think there's enough space to put them both in, just not across the street from each other. And thirdly, a thought about the old library building, maybe that could be something like a historical society building. Many towns our size have them, and there has certainly been a request from the people of the town to have a committee. If we had a space that doesn't have to maybe change zoning from institutional to something else, that might be a nice fit. But it would mean Wanakee would have to buy it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Tierney. Mr. Tierney?
I'm sorry, I'm available for questions, but you know, actually, what that young lady said makes a lot of sense.
I'm not that young.
Let's see, Nyla Fry?
Okay, I watched Six Mile Creek addition before and during development. Areas of Six Mile Creek were too low for development, some of it, and it happened anyway. Now, I see people move out of some of the homes every two or three years after experiencing a wet year with water in the basement. In these cases, there's a massive cleanup and a "for sale" sign erected on the property. How sad is it when wetland areas that retain water are filled in to create problems for all the rest of us? When will we realize man cannot engineer water retention areas with the same efficiency and capacity as in a smaller amount of natural wetland area? It seems leaders of Wanakee don't see the problem for what it is. After the flooding on Division Street into the park area, the community center, their eyes should be wide open. Building in low-lying areas is negatively affecting all of us. And another point, perhaps it would be wise to make decisions for new development projects after the Housing Task Force makes a recommendation to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
One note, if any, Adam's mentioning people that he thinks have just general comments, not on any public hearing items. If you do have public hearing items, I would hold those comments for the hearing. But Nyla, I think that's where you were going with those.
Mine was general.
Okay.
Okay, and the last one I have is Barb Drazen. Oh, written comments, sorry. Okay, that's all I have.
She wanted you to read it.
Oh, read it, okay. There we go. Okay. I don't understand why everything goes to closed session. It is, is it, you don't want taxpayers to know, I assume it's either anything or everything, is it to benefit what the developer wants? Anything, I think it's anything. That's the question.
I can answer that question as it pertains to whenever the village board goes into closed session for bargaining purposes, and in fact, that is to protect the taxpayers as opposed to do any harm, certainly. I mean, the thing to take into consideration is, when we are working with a developer, we don't get to go into their boardroom and hear their discussions on what they're willing to do and what they're willing not to do. And that is effectively what the village board does when it goes into closed session. It identifies for staff the different terms and conditions that it would find acceptable for certain agreements, and we certainly cannot have the other parties hear that, because then they would know exactly what our position is, and it would kill our bargaining position.
Okay, anything else?
I think that's all.
Okay. Moving on, we're going to go to our first public hearing. Public hearing and discussion action on an amendment to the Kilkenny Commons General Development Plan for setbacks.
Kevin, are you introducing?
I can introduce it, yes. At the plan commission, this was recommended for approval, and it's really to allow for some added pedestrian access that we wanted around the site, and accommodate some utilities. We can follow that up if anybody has questions after the public hearing.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Adam, do you have any sheets?
Not for this issue, I don't believe.
Is there anybody who would like to address the board? Go ahead.
Linda Ashmore, 114 South Street. This is the issue with the Laurel apartment building, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. At the plan commission, it was discussed that there would be sidewalks all the way around. That was kind of what, it sounded like they were going towards. Does this proposal do that?
We'll be discussing it at the plan commission, but yes, this allows us the flexibility to get sidewalks or pedestrian access on all four sides. There's some, you know, some details that have to go along with that, we'll discuss at the plan commission, but yes, it's to accommodate the pedestrian access on the north side or on the parkway side.
Okay. And then, it's setting, the setback is much smaller than the normal setback. And so I'm a little bit concerned about a big apartment building with a skinned sidewalk.
Just to be, so, and as part of the discussion of the plan commission, and for what you, if you approve this tonight, one thing to keep in mind is, we do have the site plan from Steve Brown Apartments. The building is not changing in the location, and the road is not changing in location, no matter what the board does tonight. This is, just to follow up on Kevin, this gives us the flexibility by changing the setbacks to allow for a sidewalk on the north side of the development. I mean, and just so everyone knows, I mean, when we initially approved the certified survey map, and when we initially looked at this lot, it had not been planned for a sidewalk on the north side of the building, south of the parkway. Village staff has, and then village staff informed the developer and the property owner, and then the plan commission did also, that we would like to have a sidewalk on the north side of the building. And in fact, this is a situation where the developer and the property owner are working towards doing something that was not anticipated on the front end of the development. But I think bottom line is, we're working towards getting a sidewalk, and one of the, and one of the things that we, in order to put a sidewalk there, is to get this setback changed. But the road location and the building location are not changing.
And that was one of my concerns, because the apartment building is very big, and nobody at the plan commission brought up maybe make it a smaller apartment building. Then you have a little bit more room for your setbacks that are supposed to be the normal setbacks.
We can, we can keep going, Chris.
The public hearing's open, so I'm going to wait till everybody's had their chance, and then we'll move forward.
But anyways, that's one of the things, things happen at the plan commission, and only several, some of you members are at the plan commission, and then that stuff doesn't necessarily get into your packet. So, that's my concern.
Okay.
Just to add on to what Brian said.
Let's, let's, I'm going to make that up first, if that's okay. Anybody else that would like to address the board on this? Okay, hearing none. Kevin?
Just to add on to what Brian said, when the parkway was planned, it was planned to have a multi-path on one side of the roadway, and nothing on the other side. So it didn't, wasn't planned to have a sidewalk on the, on the south side of the road. There was a 10-foot-plus-wide path on the north side that's supposed to accommodate. That's generally been our policy, but our planner said, well, it makes sense here. You know, this is a place where you might see some pedestrian access, is there a way we can make it work? And that's the direction we got from the plan commission. See if you can come up with an accommodation that would allow for the sidewalk even on the south side, even though in the entire length of the piece of parkway, this will be the only section that has a sidewalk on it, on the south side.
Okay. Board members, any comments or questions?
No, we have a little diagram of this, and I was at the plan commission, and he presented it all in full color, and it seemed to make sense to me. There, the sidewalk is not right up to the road, it's not right up to the building, there's easement in between, et cetera. It looked like a very nice plan to me, and it's, he's accommodating what we wanted.
Agreed. Any other comments? Okay, then do we have a motion on this?
I make a motion, we approve the amendment to the GDP as presented.
Okay, motion by Phil Williams, second by Joe Zitzelberger? Okay, any other comments? Called a question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I just have it. Next, we have public hearing and discussion action on general development plan, specific implementation plan, and preliminary plat for Golden Ponds addition to Westbridge. Kevin?
This was recommended for approval by the plan commission. I think it'd be appropriate for the village board to hear a presentation from the developer and his consultant, and then hold the public hearing.
Okay.
My name's Matt Schreiner with Veerbecker Associates. I'm going to talk to you about this parcel tonight.
It's on, it's, it's, it's not going to be overhead, it's just there.
The project is located on the north side of Copper Road, just west of Meadowbrook Park. It's a 62-acre parcel, and we're proposing 83 single-family residential lots. So, the project will have two primary parks. There's a top park located basically in the center of the subdivision, that's on Welcome Boulevard, the extension of Welcome Boulevard from the Westbridge subdivision. And then on the north side of the plat, there will be a larger park that will contain two fishing ponds. Those fishing ponds will not be used for stormwater management. We have four other ponds within the subdivision that will be used to address stormwater management requirements. Thanks, Kevin. So, we will have ADA parking stalls that will go in across from the top park in the center of the subdivision, and there will be an accessible route, an ADA accessible route from those ADA parking stalls to the north park where the fishing ponds are located. We'll also have a path that goes through the park, a paved path that's ADA accessible to both fishing ponds. As far as the, the site drainage is concerned, it drains from west to east through existing farmland ditches right now, and our plan is to enhance that drainage pattern through the site. So what we're going to do is, or we're proposing to do, is to cap those existing farmland ditches in place, and then create a new meandering stream that will run along the north and the east side of the property. So, that, that enhancement to the stream will provide significant positive environmental impacts as follows. We will be increasing water quality that runs through this site and downstream to Six Mile Creek, because we'll be adding a buffer between the drainage way right now, or the drainage way we're proposing, compared to what's existing on the site right now. So right now, you can farm, the land is being used for agriculture, you can farm pretty close to the ditches, and sediment really can get right into that stream. When we're done, we'll have a buffer that's 75 feet outside of the stream quarter to help prevent sediment from being trapped or routed through the site and into the stream. We're also going to lengthen the stream as part of this project. So in lengthening that stream out, we're reducing the slope, slowing down the water velocity, and that helps to reduce erosion from the banks of the stream. So, we're decreasing basically the velocity of the stream. We're also going to be, in capping the existing farmland ditches, we're going to be trapping sediment that currently exists there that we believe is contaminated with phosphorus. So you may have heard of the Suck the Muck program. Dane County's currently looking to remove sediment from several miles of stream that drain into our lakes in order to get rid of some of the legacy phosphorus that's been washed in there over time, so that it can't be re-suspended and then travel downstream. This project is going to cap over 2,700 linear feet of existing farmland ditch that we think contains legacy phosphorus, and we're estimating that we'll be trapping up to 15,000 pounds of phosphorus in place. If Dane County were to take this project on as a standalone project with Suck the Muck, we think it could cost up to half a million dollars to complete, and that will be completed just as part of this development. The permit that we are pursuing to do this stream enhancement is, has a longer lead time, and I want to talk about that a little bit. So, these types of permits, whenever we pursue these, you know, we always want to go get the DNR's feedback on the front end. It's a longer permit period, and it's always good to have a kickoff meeting with them, and talk about what we're planning to do, make sure we have our assumptions correct, that we're going to apply for the right permit, that we won't miss a step. And so typically, the engineer, we would go do that and talk to the DNR. But for this particular project, in working with the Tyrenies, they recommended that not only they attend that meeting, but also the village attend that meeting, just to make sure that they have as many stakeholders, you know, in play at the beginning of this project, to make sure we get good feedback on what we're proposing to do, and that it makes sense to everybody. So, we actually did that way back in April of 2018. We met, and met with Wendy from the DNR to talk about this permit. The village attended, Todd Schmidt attended that meeting with Don Tierney, and I think we got some really good feedback, and it's been nice to work with a developer like the Tyrenies, because it seems like they're always trying to make sure they have people involved early on, and you know, their projects are always providing a positive environmental impact. They're going above and beyond what they have to do for stormwater management requirements to, to make sure that they have a positive impact with their developments. So, that permit right now is currently being reviewed by the DNR and the Army Corps. It does have a public notice period that's required when you submit an individual Chapter 30 stream enhancement permit. We followed that public notification process to a T. We sent out certified letters to all the adjacent property owners. We issued a class one notice in the Wanakee Tribune, letting everyone know this permit's under public input. And then also, the DNR and the Army Corps post that permit application on their websites. So all that's been done, and they're currently reviewing the permit as we speak. But whenever we're doing a project like this, relocating a stream, obviously flooding, stormwater design is a big part of the project. And so, we've spent a lot of time modeling this, working with the village on our models, to have them review them and make sure they're correct. And, you know, what, what we're doing is a couple things. We're looking at what the 100-year elevation is going to be, so that we can make sure we set all the lots for this subdivision well above that, so they're high and dry and won't flood when we have big rain events. But we're also doing, is looking at how much capacity is on the site. So we want to make sure we're not going to have a negative impact to any upstream property owners, or have a negative impact to any downstream property owners. The site currently has a certain amount of storage on it, as it exists right now today. We looked at how much storage exists on the site, not just what the ponds can hold, we're designing, but the entire site during a large rain. And then we look at how much storage will be there when we're done with the development. After we've graded everything, what will be left. And we're actually increasing, we're still making tweaks to the design, minor tweaks, but right now, we're increasing the amount of storage onsite by almost 30%. What that means is, there will not be a change to flood elevations upstream. They will not get any worse. And we think we, we could potentially mitigate downstream flood impacts, because we're adding more capacity, more storage on our site. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Perfect. Okay, then I'm going to open up the public hearing. Adam, do we have any?
Yep. David Lekt, 102 Holiday Drive? There you go.
So, good evening, I'm David Lekt.
Can we over here?
Either way.
You can stay there, if you want, yep.
All right. I'm a project manager with Premier Builders. Just wanted to speak on behalf of Livable Communities by Don Tierney, that they build communities with families and businesses in the Wanakee area in mind. My experience working with other developers in the Dane County area is these developers are nowhere near as easy to work with as a Tierney team. Don, Jerry, and the team, they're just a phone call away. If a need rises or a request is made, these guys are right there to assess the situation and make it right. They add in green spaces, parks, ponds, pools, in this case, a fishing pond, natural habitat for sustainability within their communities. Livable Communities also assist young people with the help of professional builders to attain their dreams by creating sustainable housing that is green-built and energy-efficient, keeping costs down for the homeowners once the ownership is attained. These guys give back, they donate resources back to the Wanakee community as needs arise. Don Tierney and his guys, they're hands-on. When it is over 90 degrees outside, you'll find Don and his team out making sure things are maintained to the standards that have been set by them in previous developments. When hard-working builders and hard-working developers work together, they create affordable housing for members of the community.
Thank you.
Jerry Tierney, 3564.
Just available for questions.
Michelle Nell, 1950 FOG Mountain Pass.
Oh, I had mine, it's just a written comment.
Oh, okay. Support for.
Can you say that louder?
Michelle, support for Golden Ponds addition to Westbridge.
Thank you.
Mike Schott?
Mike Schott, 731 Westbridge Trail. I've been around developments, being in the landscape industry since the early 70s. I've seen many developments go in, I've seen many different things, and always the developer was, I want to get to the bottom, I want to get to the bottom line, I don't want to spend any more than I have to. Been in Wanakee 11 years now, and I've been around most of the Tierney's developments. It seems to me that everything the Tierney boys do is above and beyond what is called for, and if there's a problem, they're always there to take care of whatever the problem is, and make it better than I would ever have been. So I, in that case, I would support Golden Pond, because I guarantee you, it'll be perfect.
Thank you. I have written comments from Joe Craig. Joe, do you want me to read these?
No, just to...
Have them here.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, okay. Linda.
I think we want you to read them.
Adam, you need to read that.
Okay. As a builder, I am very impressed with the Tierney's developments. They all have such beautiful parks for the community. Linda Ashmore.
Yeah, I had submitted two documents. One of them is the public hearing, public notice of the public hearing that the Army Corps of Engineers put out, and then the other one is from the plan commission packet, pages 97 through 99. I guess, one of the issues I have as just average citizen is, this is noticed as, you know, confirm or whatever, approve the GDP and the SIP, but nowhere is it said in the public noticing that we're filling in wetlands. And so, the Strand Report that went to the village had some issues that, I'm not an engineer, but stuff was highlighted in yellow that says use of regression equations and then acceptable hydrology method for this situation, basically to estimate off-site peak discharge to the site. So, just looking at it as common sense, when you fill in wetlands, it seems like, and these wetlands feed into Six Mile Creek, you're changing how water flows. And right now, we've had, in the last month, we've had flooding at Six Mile Creek. So, I'm just concerned that we'll end up in a kind of situation that Middleton has right now, where, you know, they're looking at having to do a special assessment, I believe, because FEMA didn't cover some of the flood damage in August 2018. Thank you.
Thank you.
From Sam Kaufman, 908 Turnberry Drive. I'm opposed to filling in wetlands for the Golden Ponds development. Middleton recently had a denial of FEMA funding for flooding recovery because they filled in too many wetlands. I do not want residents to have to run a sub-pump constantly in order to have a dry basement, like what is currently happening in the Topeka Trail area of town. Let's see here. Steph Moran, 215 West Main Street, against Golden Ponds addition to Westbridge. John Schwingle, 7894 Woodland Trail. Schwingle Builders, I have come to support clear developments of residential lots in the village of Wanakee. Growth is a very, is very important to keep communities alive in Wanakee, and is a great place to, to make it a great place to live and grow. Let's see, Kevin Aker, 102 North Holiday. For the Golden Ponds development, we have been building with Don Tierney communities for over 20 years. They are hard-working, and they stand behind what they build. And Colleen Webster, 204 West Third Street. I do not publicly, she's opposed to filling in wetlands. That's all I have. Hopefully I didn't miss anybody.
If anybody was missed, please speak up right now, or if anybody else would like to address us, I'll give you that opportunity.
Yes, Don Tierney. The thing that really impressed me, it's a gross property, 62 acres, and when they calculated it, lots in right-of-way is 31. It's 50% basically that is not in the lots with a right-of-way. And that's, that's a huge amount of area. But we, we told the engineers, we don't want to see some pumps ever running, unless maybe a pipe breaks in ours. And we want to increase the storage, and if you are going to fill a small wetland, when you're done, make sure you have a larger area, you make more wetlands. And maybe you can add to that.
I'll let you come in a second. There was another gentleman that wanted to speak.
Oh, yeah. I just wanted, I'm just going to speak off the cuff, Justin, I'm a local builder here.
Justin, where do you live? In Wanakee?
Yeah, in Wanakee. Yeah, and I grew up in Wanakee.
Just your address, I just need your address.
What's that?
Your address.
You have to state it.
1120 North Division Street.
Perfect, thank you.
So, I grew up in Wanakee, I've been here my whole life, I went through all the schools here. So, I've seen exactly what happened when Don came in and put his communities in here. I worked at the very first Tierney community as a hockey player at the food stand. So there was only 10 houses at that time, now I see what happened. So, everything that he and his team has done has been...
So, everything that he and his team has done has been extremely supportive to this community's growth and development, and I definitely 100% support further development. And I know what they're going to do as far as wetlands and engineering is going to cover any shortage in wetland, and any drainage shortage. And if it's not, they're going to make sure it's right. If they see something that happens, I mean, yeah, we had an extreme flood this year. We've had them every decade. It happens. We've all dealt with it. But, they figure out how to deal with problems and come up with solutions. And I've seen it for the past three years now, that I've been working with them, and I'm very impressed. So, I fully support any community that's going to go in here.
Thank you.
And just to address some of the comments, I get a match right with your backyard associates. So, just to comment on the wetlands, we are, right now the wetlands that are out there exist primarily along the drainage ditches. They're right up next height to it, and they're considered lower-quality wetlands. The wetlands that we will be putting in place or enhancing as part of this project, not only are we nearly tripling the amount of wetlands on the property when we're done, but it will, there will be more diversity in the wetlands that we're providing than currently exists on the site. And just one last comment on water, you know, Don makes a comment about he doesn't want some pumps running. He makes that comment to me, and I'm the one who needs to make sure that happens. And so, it's been something we've studied pretty closely. And right now, just so everyone's clear, the low point in Cop Road is right near the culverts by the tracks, that's at elevation 925.3. Every house will be set with a lowest opening that is a minimum of two feet above that elevation in the road. So we're not talking about the lowest opening of the house being somewhere, you know, above the ponds that are onsite, it will be above Cop Road. And so I think that's just something important to point out.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, the Strand Associates summary says that Cop Road is intended to be lowered by over two feet. That's how you're going to accomplish this, is lowering the road?
We look at...
Matt, I was going to say, Kent Seer from Strand, he's probably better to answer that question.
I didn't ask that question.
Linda.
Oh, Linda did? I'm sorry, I thought it was you. Linda, the portion of Cop Road that they were lowering was actually further to the west. It was not in the area where these culverts are. That portion of the road is not being affected by the construction. And they did also make an adjustment to that.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else?
Can I make one last comment?
You may.
From my understanding, it takes considerably more man-made retention areas to make up for natural wetland areas. Just wanted to make that comment.
Adam Akers, engineers, Kent?
Roughly three times as many.
I guess, but what does that mean?
Nope, so, we're not going to go back and forth. I'm just asking our engineers, Nyla's comment is that you generally need more wetlands to, when you remove wetlands?
I will say, as part of the permitting process, the Corps will tell them what they need to replace, and it's usually a ratio of either two and a half to one or three to one. So if they take out X, they need to replace it with two and a half X or three X. So that process is underway now, we don't know what they're able to say, I guess, I'm speaking for you, Matt, but that's generally what the requirement is, to mitigate losses of wetlands.
I think it's general statement to say that the quality of the wetlands that are out there now...
I'm going to close the public hearing, and then I'll give that to you, Kevin, go ahead.
The quality of the wetlands that are out there now will be greatly enhanced by the triple amount of wetlands that are going to be going in when it's done.
Okay. Okay, board members' comments or questions for our engineers?
A board member that lives, I think, closest to that area, I'm curious, two weeks ago, Meadowbrook Park was almost entirely underwater. Is this likely to have any effect on that, good or bad? In a scenario like what we had this way?
Sure, I don't think it, what we're doing here, because Meadowbrook comes in at the southeast corner of this parcel, it will have, it will be affected very slightly by what we're doing. So because, as I mentioned, we're adding more capacity on the site for those larger events, it's going to create a situation where, you know, we didn't model Meadowbrook, so I can't tell you definitively it's going to be improved by what we're doing, but we're adding more capacity, so in theory it should be a little better. It will not get any worse than it currently is after we're done with this.
For what it's worth, as I was flying my drone around and looking at Meadowbrook, that was pretty well flooded. This area was not nearly so much.
Will you be looking for a chif on that? Really?
Okay, any other board members' comments?
What's the timeline for the permit that's pending? Do we know when?
So, the timeline tip, right now we're in a period where the DNR and the Army Corps are reviewing, final stages of the permit. Unfortunately, the Army Corps does not have a window. We've seen them take up to 30 days to make a determination, we've seen them take up to 90 days to make a determination. We've been, you know, talking to them about any information that they need from us, that's in addition to what they already have and they said they have what they need, so we're just waiting right now.
Is there any thought, I mean, as I look at it, the stream, I'm a little worried that it's pretty, I know, to me, meandering might be different than how other people say. Is there any thought to put in a marsh break in that, to slow down that water so it doesn't become a, a dike, I mean, a trail, up just a passageway instead of...
Almost like a...
Am I worried is that that'll become a funnel? It'll move the water faster than what's currently there?
Are you looking at...
The, I'm assuming that blue string on the outside, is that the, is that the waterway?
It is, yeah.
So, mine is like, why does it not go through the, why is there not a marsh stop? And then it comes through like we have in some of, the natural break would be that there'd be a marsh there, and then the water would come back through. My worry is that that's a direct path, and we're coming out of there pretty fast, comparison wise, to what it does now, because it comes over the water and comes through the, even though they're not ideal wetlands, they slowed, they're there. So are you going to have the whole stream wetland, or, I mean, I'm trying to see, picture this thing?
Yeah, and I'll try to answer your question. So the entire stream, adjacent to the stream, it will basically be a wetland area, you know, several feet outside of the stream, several feet outside of that, well, 75 feet outside of that wetland boundary, will have another buffer and environmental corridor that restricts any impervious surface. So, that's what we're planning on right now. The reason we can't route the stream through any of the ponds is because that's prohibited from the DNR, by the DNR, to route a stream that way. I think that was the question you were asking.
Well, sort of, I'm just like, is there a way to, I mean, when you look at a natural setting, the stream will come through, I mean, it gets small streams anyway, because they go through, they usually go through sort of like a marsh, and similarly, what, Six Mile comes out of this marsh here, and so it slows it down a little bit, as far as the marsh, the plants themselves slow everything down, and it seeps out to the other side. I don't see any breaks in that. I mean, that's my worry, is that it just comes, the water's coming out of there.
Sure. So when we, when we apply for these permits, or when we talk to the DNR, you know, they're, the DNR doesn't want us to put a break or a dam, if you will, even if it's small and creates a little backwater in a marshy area, they don't want us to do that for several reasons, but that's, that's part of the reason why this has been laid out the way it is. It's basically because from a permitting standpoint, the DNR doesn't want us to create a dam or an impoundment, even if it would create that marsh area that you're talking about. So they want us to maintain flow from and through the site.
So they want the water out?
They want to make, well, they want you to match the drainage patterns that you have currently. They don't have a problem if you're modifying them, which is what we're doing here, we're enhancing the stream, we are slowing the water down, but they don't want it slowed down to a point where it's basically flat through the site, if that makes sense.
Well said. But I think I'll add to it just a little bit. Currently, 100% of the wetlands are, there's ditches, there's farm drainage ditches, okay? And there is no breaks, the water comes in, the water goes out. And currently, the only wetland is those actual streams, okay? And there is, there is no marsh situation right now, as it is.
Is there water in there all here?
In the, in the, in the ditches, yes. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, no, I appreciate it.
I want to try and bring up a satellite image, so you can see what's there now.
As you're doing that, currently there's, looks like some sort of stream that runs underneath the railroad tracks over there? Is that something that you'll keep and tie in with whatever new things that you've got?
Yeah, so the, the pipe that runs under the tracks drains Meadowbrook Park.
It doesn't even look like a pipe, I mean, it almost looks like a small bridge over something through there.
Right, there's a bridge, yeah. There's a bridge at the tracks, and then there's a pipe just downstream of that, or like a farmland access point. And that will not be touched. We're planning to leave that in place as is.
And to the fishing ponds, which is totally off what we were talking about, is there going to be handicap access into that, or what do we have?
Yep, so we'll have a handicap access, paved handicap access to each fishing pond.
To a pier into the pond, or is it just going to be onto the...
Right now, we're planning on a pier. A platform, a platform into each pond.
So maybe you could describe how the water's flowing right now with this?
Sure, so from, right now, it comes into the site at this location on the west, and on the north, at the very top, you can see the stream coming down. So those are the primary two areas where water is coming onto the site. It then flows down to this ditch here, and then heads east, and then down to the intersection, Cop Road near the railroad tracks.
Are there residual drainage ditches there? Are they natural?
Those are man-made farmland ditches, yep.
So describe what the wetlands are on that map right now.
So the wetlands, basically, you can see the ditches on this property, the wetlands basically follow those ditches. Exactly, they don't go much outside of those current ditches. So, all the area that you see that looks like it's been farmed, none of that area is wetland. The wetlands exist primarily along all of the ditches. So it's basically the hydrologies are at the bottom of the ditch, and as you get so far up the bank, you lose that hydrology and the wetlands stop.
So would these have been considered man-made wetlands?
Uh, that is a, it's a, I guess, how do I say this? They are, the wetlands were there because the ditches were put in place. Technically, they're not man-made wetlands, they appeared because of grading activities, but in the DNR's eyes, they're not man-made, they'd be considered wetlands, they're not artificial wetlands. But, yes, they were created because the ditches were put in place.
The ditches were there to drain it, right?
So that could be farmed, yep.
Well, we, we have people that keep wanting to move to Wannakee, so we have to come up with places for them where they want to move to. This is a, sort of a logical extension of the area. It's the best plan I've seen for the area so far, we've seen others. I know where the water drains down, it goes past the golf course, I think it's hole number four or five, or something like that. Is that true? Okay, and that water seems to go, and it goes into the marsh down there. Doesn't seem to go too fast. When it's a heavy rain, the ditch does fill up a little bit, but I've never seen it really overflow. So, I think, I think it's enhanced, if there are wetlands, they're not really tremendous wetlands, and I see what's being done is an enhancement of the wetlands.
Aaron, any other comments?
Not right now.
My comments are very simple ones. Basically, I don't want to see water running through Wannakee where we have flooding going on. However, we're going to have times where that's going to happen. It doesn't matter what community you're in, Lodi was underwater, Middleton's been underwater. There's times and events that occur that make these things happen. Wetlands, I own a piece of property up on Lake Wisconsin, we have wetlands that are 70% of our property. I think Mr. Schwingle actually built our place there, so he probably remembers that. We had a very tight envelope where we could put a home even, to get that done. The wetlands absolutely perform an important function within all of our waterways. I do firmly support our Suck the Muck program that the county has started. This is actually enhancing that and helping us to get that taken care of. I do like that aspect of it. I do like that we have fishing ponds that we're going to have in Wannakee. We don't have that feature right now. We have our streams and our creeks with certain little fish that people can go in and fish. We've also have Rotary Pond, which, which, sorry Phil, I didn't want to, I remember...
It's starting to clean up.
Where, it's starting to clean up, and it was in an area where we redeveloped, and we have a great village center there right next door to it now. I do think they have a plan to take care of the water here, and I don't want to see that someone brought up Six Mile, in Six Mile, there's a couple streets that water is a problem right now for them. And, you know, we have to figure out how to address that, we're talking with those neighbors right now, trying to come up with a solution for it. It's not easy after the fact, though, as you can imagine. I do like that they're coming with a plan to elevate everything, and I know you have to assure Don, you really need to assure this board that we're not going to have a water issue, because there's not a single one of us that hasn't seen the water that's on that property at times, when we have heavy rain. So we want to make sure that water coming off the hill that's coming right at that is taken care of and dispersed properly. I'm just going to defer a little bit. Kent, do you see, I mean, is this a solid plan as far as where that water runoff is going to be?
Chris, will you rely on the modeling that they provided? Yes, as was mentioned earlier, to make a correction to the way they modeled it, they've done that. I think we're a lot closer to where we need to be. There are still things that, as Matt mentioned, they're tweaking, we're still working through some of that to make sure that water is not an issue in terms of both flooding, stormwater storage, and stormwater quality, you know, cleaning up the stormwater that's on the site. The wetland issues and the stream relocation issues kind of fall in the hands of the DNR and the Corps, so the village doesn't really have much to say about that. But, from a floodplain zoning, we do have a say in that, and that's what our focus is, to make sure we don't get the flooding there.
Did your modeling talk about downstream a lot?
The model that we're using, the model we're using as far as hydrology, it's something that FEMA has approved, so we're using some, a FEMA-approved hydrologic model. That is the basis for the study we're going with. And that model comes all the way from Six Mile, so it comes all the way up to Six Mile, up the street area. And up into this property, so. It does look at what flood elevations are downstream and what flows are on this property. And so, we didn't look downstream to figure out if the flood elevation's going to go down, because we're adding more storage here, but because we're... Adding storage, we know there will be a downstream impact, it may be mitigated.
Thank you. Okay, so our options are basically to approve, not approve, delay, if you want to?
Well, I mean, can I, I would say, just to kind of touch on a few things, the vast majority of the discussion, I think, has been related to the preliminary plat. The recommended motion is that it get approved, subject to final review and approval by the village engineer and village attorney. So I think some of the things that Kent was talking about, about how the document is going to have to be, the plat's going to have to be tweaked, that the plat is, that's rolled into the condition of approval. And keep in mind that the, this is just the preliminary plat, so the final plat is still going to have to go through Plan Commission and through the village board. Now, the reason why we structure a motion like this, so that they're going to have to satisfy Kevin on the platting issues, is so that the changes get made between the preliminary plat and the final plat process. I agree with what Kent said related to kind of the different jurisdictional issues of what is the village's authority versus where does the state get involved in the Army Corps? And keep in mind that the plat, I think, as the developers consultant has said, is going to the state, and so they're, the DNR is looking at a number of issues. So I do think that the recommended motion kind of takes into consideration everything that's been commented on tonight as it relates to water issues. So to try to give you a comfort level on that, when it comes to the zoning, the document that the general development plan that's been prepared is consistent with the general development plan that we've had for other residential PUDs. So I think, I haven't heard anybody comment on that, but I've reviewed it and I'm comfortable with it, just to make you aware.
One other comment too, and Phil and Aaron are both on Parks Committee with me, and the Parks Committee did approve this unanimously for the park component of this.
with the ponds, so I'll just point that out as well.
The only thing that I would add in regard to the recommended motion that.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. The, right now, it says approve the GDP and SIP. The, the specific implementation plan is something that only goes to the plant commission. So the, I mean, the recommended motion is to approve the GDP and the preliminary plat, subject to, you know, any changes that are approved by, by Kevin or by me.
Motion by Susan Springman to approve.
Second.
Second by Phil Williams. Okay, I'll call, any other comments? Okay, I'll call to question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Ayes have it. Next, we have a public hearing to discuss an action on general development plan, preliminary and final plat annexation petition and related zoning for Woodland Crest developments.
I got some.
We're not, uh, look at that a second. Sure, a little introduction, and I think it'd be appropriate to have the developer speak as well. Introduction is the plant commission is recommended approval, but we've recommended at a staff level that you do not take action tonight, because with this, we want a developer's agreement. We're still negotiating the terms of developer's agreement. So this, if, if appropriate, we'll, we'll delay this for a couple weeks till we get the developer's agreement to go along with this. So with that, is to have the developer make a presentation. I think you've seen it a number of times, but I'd like him to walk me through it.
Good evening. My name is Dan O'Callahan. I'm here representing Forward Development Group. Appreciate the opportunity to be here again tonight for this public hearing. We've had a, had the opportunity to have a number of conversations with you over the last year about this project, so I won't give you the, the general overview again, but I do want to take a few minutes to talk about some of the specifics of this site in light of some of the recent conversations we've been having. So we're very excited about this plan. We think that this site in particular presents a good site, a great site, for a grocery store and a convenience store in Wannakee. So I just want to run through some of what we think are some of the, the advantages here of this site. So you can see the, the plan on the screen there, and I'm sure you're all familiar with the, the location as well. So I just want you to imagine this as I'm kind of running through some of these, some of these attributes of this site. So this site for, for a grocer works particularly well. This is on the east side of Highway Q, so we've got traffic coming, coming up Q with a right in into this, this development site. We think that presents a, a very convenient and a safe traffic configuration for folks in the community wanting to, to turn in and get groceries at the end of the day. There are also a number of right-in, right-out opportunities for traffic from this site, and those right-in, right-out turn movements are safer than turning left through traffic or across traffic. Another positive attribute to this site is that it works particularly well, if you think about where the high school is situated, and how traffic with parents and students coming from the high school to a grocery store in this part of town, how that traffic pattern would work. This site is particularly well-suited to accommodate that kind of traffic safely. The signalized intersection at Woodland Drive and Simon Crest Way not only provides for safe ingress and egress to this site from the high school, but also addresses sort of the existing condition, which is, I won't say it's unsafe, but it could certainly be improved, and we think the signalized intersection will improve that. Pedestrian safety in particular. I think it was one of the first comments we heard from the, the plant commission or the village board when we presented a concept plan a year ago, was to do something about pedestrian safety at that intersection. There's also a connector, or multiple connectors, really, between this site, the residential neighborhoods that surround the multi-use path, extension that would come up along Peaceville Valley Parkway. Just provides overall good connectivity for this site, in particular being on the east side of Q. So the safety advantages, left turning, less traffic turning left into oncoming vehicles, the student and the, and the parent traffic flow from the high school site through the intersection, we think is, is a, is a positive attribute here. The right in, the right out, turn movements. So a lot of benefit here in developing this site, regardless of whatever else might be happening in the community, or even in the immediate vicinity. I think the development plan that we've put forward, which has been revised a number of times over the last year in response to comments from the plant commission and from the board, we think this site brings a lot of value to Wannakee. We've got the grocer, the convenience store, the possibility for other retail here, and then some other uses that we hope to get into after the community finishes the, the housing plan. And so just to quickly address another issue that's come up recently, this notion of, of two grocery stores, you know, does the community want two grocery stores? Is that a good thing? Is that a bad thing? How should we plan for that? All appropriate questions for the community to be asking, we think. From our perspective, if you ask us what our opinion is on the topic, we're, we're perfectly happy to, to see competition, to see competition right across the highway, as a matter of fact. We're very fortunate to have a, a partner in Hy-Vee who has indicated their strong commitment to this site, to this community, regardless of whatever else might be happening. They've, they've taken a look at the market. They understand the market, and they've made the decision to move ahead with an investment in this market. And they've told us, and I think they've told you very directly, that they invite competition. They compete in all of the communities that they're in, sometimes with two or three or four other grocery stores. So they're not afraid of the competition from other potential retailers in the area. So as far as approving this site and then looking at something else in, in the neighborhood, even right across the street, that's not a concern for us. We think we've got a very solid plan and are ready to move ahead with that. It's not a concern for our grocery store partner either. They're here tonight. You can hear from them if you have questions. But we don't think that it's necessarily appropriate for the village board to be put in a position where you're essentially picking the winner and the loser here, you know, which, which grocer should move forward and which one should be put on hold or, or potentially not move forward at all. We don't think that's appropriate. We think competition is good. We've seen competition work to the taxpayers' advantage, in this case, really pushed us to sharpen our pencil and revise our plans and work harder to bring our development at a lower cost. So competition is good. Mr. Tierney was very clear about that in just our last meeting. He gave the analogy of, of two horses. I think that's a good, a good analogy, that the competition here is, has been effective, and it will continue to be effective. I guess the only, the only part of that analogy I might take issue with is, is the race aspect of it, you know? We don't see this as a race to the finish line. We think competition is good, and this project is ready to move forward. We'd like to see the village board move it forward this month. We don't think you have to pick the right number of grocery stores for the community. We think you can let, leave that choice to the market. It's, it's no different than really any other business. You're, you're never asked to pick, you know, how many, how many gas stations should we have in the, in the community? How many pharmacies? How many tax accountant's offices? How many, you know, fill in the blank. You're not, you're never in a position where you're trying to figure out how many to have in the community. The, the market will figure that out. So we're ready to move forward. We think we've got a great project, a lot of positives, a lot of, a lot of existing concerns, pre-existing concerns. It brings a lot of new benefit to the community. If in time, when you look at the development proposals across the street or anywhere else, and you think they have merit, we'd encourage you to, to move forward with those if they're consistent with your, your vision for the community. We think, we've got something that is consistent with that community's, the community's vision, and we ask you to please support that without delay. Happy to answer any questions, or I'll just.
Thank you. I'll open up the public hearing, and then we can go back to questions, if that's okay? Okay, I'll open up the public hearing.
Dan Helt, two fourteen K.
Can I speak on both of them? On Hy-Vee and Compare 'Em? I will compare 'em. Is that okay if I'm meaning it? First of all, I was the village president for ten years. And in that time, I quit due to health reasons and my family. And, but I'd like to tell you about those board members I had on that board. Those guys were great. And a lot of you guys know me, some of them are out, still around. But I'd like to tell you about what they really did. I, I, I'm taking up a little time here, but I think this is important. They, they put in EMS, they put in a nursing home, two vill-, two medical clinics, SPNL out here, you know, that's the Oscar Mayer plant. They had to put in a big shopping center. They put in a shopping center along Century Avenue, it's still there. Am I boring you? And I could just give you a big, long list. I thought that was next, then at the eighth, and then I was going to tell you all about this. Well, anyway, then go, I'm going to get back to Hy-Vee and, and, what do you call them again? What's, what's the name of the other?
Festival.
Festival. Okay, Don. I know Don. Okay. Okay, now, I think your biggest problem is your traffic. Okay. Where's the school? Way up there. All the people from the side, that's all more filled out than it is up here. They can go over there. But all these people from the north, east, and the south are all coming in on this road, this main road up that, and right past Festival. Okay, so they come over. Suppose there's a great big busload of kids coming there, and it's a cold, wintry day, and ice here and head. And they come in, and they want to turn right, or they want to come through. They look down. Hey, I can't see what's on the other side, because there's a hill there. So you go down. Okay, but here's another big road coming in over here from, from the north, and it's called Holiday Drive. That hooks up to it. It comes from Main Street all the way to Holiday Drive. Okay, everybody get the picture? Okay, so Festival comes in, they hook on. Okay, let's, let's solve it with a stoplight. All right, this big bus coming over, and it's icy, and he doesn't see what's on the other side. He comes down to go up Holiday Drive, or up, up, up Woodland. And what do you think is going to happen? Are these kids, and it, it may be a crosswalk there, too, kick off a kid or two. I don't think this is the best place. And another thing.
Dan, so we have a rule, public hearing, so you get three minutes. So if you can finish up, if you can finish up, that would be great.
Well, you never let me.
I'm giving, I'm giving, I'm giving, I'm giving you extra time.
Okay, I just want, it's only a few more minutes, just about.
You're good, go ahead.
The quiet of it, the peace of it, the, the quietness of it. You get on towards Hy-Vee, and there's nothing on the left. It's a school, school all along there. And I can't see no problem with any of the, too much noise in that area. But we go back to, to Festival, and right down there are houses all along the street, all along Holiday Drive, right up to that same stop sign. You know what? I'm eighty-nine years old, and I'll be damned if I would live there. I would never want to live there. Okay, thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
I mean, Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Adam.
I've known Chris as he does need.
Ed Schlapp.
Sorry I took up your time, but I thought, I thought you ought to know about.
After the meeting last week that I was at, where we talked about Festival Foods and Hy-Vee, my comments were related to that. Now, the developer made quite a few comments tonight that I was going to somewhat make, but I lived in this area for forty years. Three years ago, I moved to a village, so I'm not familiar with working, or coming to the meetings and seeing what the board does. I, I just want to make one comment about that. I sure found out the difference in mill rates from a township to a village. It's much higher. As far as the stores across the road from each other, in my years of working in business, I've seen car dealers. Where does that car dealer go when he wants to put in another location? He goes where there are car dealers. They want to be within sight of each other. Where does Burger King go, or any of those others, when they want to put a store in like that, or restaurant? They go to where McDonald's is, because they want that traffic. So having a store across the road from each other, I think is as, as good as you can get. That's what, and the developer mentioned that tonight, too, that competition is competition. If Festival Foods thinks they can't compete with Hy-Vee, well, then they shouldn't go in. But I'm sure Festival Foods and Hy-Vee has both done their market research and says, we can do well in this market, whether it's across the street or a mile away. So I don't know how the board operates, but it seemed to me that the board felt that they could make the decision whether another business comes to town. And I just, for example, I saw in the paper this week, Edward Jones has, I believe, five locations in Wannakee. Hope there's no Edward Jones, salespeople here. Five locations in Wannakee. Is the board going to say six is too many? That's sort of where I'm going with this. So I just think that the marketplace should dictate which stores come in and where they go. And I understand the board wants to make the right decisions, but I think the board should let the marketplace do its job. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Helt.
I, I just wondered about this TIP district thing. Isn't there a but-for test on all of these TIP districts? And I think you got it wrong, because apparently but-for you, it still would have happened. So I, I'm really against a lot of these TIPS. And I think that it's a cash cow up there, it's a cash cow out in the new section of town. Shouldn't be giving these TIPS to people when, when they would build anyway. And I wonder why, and the second part is, I wonder why, okay, you were all ready to go, the plant commission voted six to nothing, and I think three of you here voted yes, so tell me if I'm wrong, but then you come up to this, and they, they, they say they'll, they'll forego the TIP. And then why not, why not tell them yes? I'm not for Hy-Vee or anybody, but once that was on the deal, why, why do we got to delay it now? I don't, I, maybe, but why do we have to do that? I don't, I don't see. You were all ready to go with the TIP. Now that there's no TIP, why are you backing off?
Thank you. Mark Sawyer, fifteen oh five Wimbledon Way.
Yeah, Mark Sawyer, fifteen oh five Wimbledon Way. I guess for what it's worth, I'm a certified professional planner, so I do this, kind of your side, this side. So I'll take that for what it is. I'm kind of trying to give you some perspective from that third party. I guess I commend you for being patient with this development and your forethought to ask if Big Box is going to be successful in Wannakee. This is new to you. Been here, not me, some of you, twenty-plus years. You've virtually never dealt with this before. Now you're dealing with two at the same time. I commend you for asking questions about the viability of TIP itself. TIP is not a single development, shouldn't be used for single development. It is a district by name. It should be used as such, so I commend you for considering that. To answer the question that you guys directly asked about multiple grocery stores being successful adjacent to each other, Sixty-Eighth Street and State Street in Walutosa, University Ave-, Avenue at Midvale, Hilldale, there's a Pick 'n Save, there's a Metcalf's, there's a Super Target with a Walmart, or with a grocer in it. Lansing, Michigan, Fond du Lac, Eau Claire, Sacramento, virtually every big city, I think it would be successful. The developer is asking for feedback. Frankly, I don't, I didn't, haven't heard that at the plant commission level. I haven't heard it here, so I wanted to kind of give you guys some things to maybe help ask the right questions. When we talk about safety, curb radii is a big issue. Trucks need a bigger one than people do. Think about the right-in, right-out. You have a multi-use trail right there. Where are trucks actually circulating on this site? Building orientation, frankly, the site plan from an urban design perspective, you're just going to mirror it across the street. It's extremely inefficient. We're talking, if you put it in this context, beyond Wannable, beyond the bank. We're talking, if you put it in this context, beyond Wannabeul, beyond the bank, think about the density and just the amount of uses and square footage you have here. Now compare it to that, you can get a lot more on that site. Some simple questions, you rotate the building. I think frankly, the way it's laid out, you're turning your back to Simon Crest Way. That's going to be a new road. It's going to have residential on it. I think there could be more focus on that as the actual road. Frankly, the county highway is run by the county. You're only going to get so many curb cuts, you're only going to get so much access on it. People don't use it as much as they're going to use Simon Crest Way. So you're in a position, you have two developers in town, tell them what you want. I think there's way too much parking, frankly, and this you see a lot with big boxes. They plan for frankly, Good Friday, Black Friday, the day before Thanksgiving. They use the ratio of seven point one per one thousand. The village ordinance is a minimum of five per one thousand, so they have in excess of over a hundred parking stalls. They like to use parking, as I've seen elsewhere in surrounding communities, for Christmas tree stands, farmers markets, things the village already does. So think about the indirect impact that will have on the core of the village. The last piece there is all the comments in the actual general development plan about pedestrian friendliness. The front door is over three hundred feet from the right of it. The bike racks are going to be fifty to a hundred and twenty feet from the front door. Yeah, it's a grocery store, you don't necessarily walk there, but again, you're putting it in the center of residential. People will walk there if you give this site some form. And again, consider mirroring it across County G, the issues that that will raise. So I think there are issues with the general development plan. I heard there won't be an action tonight, but I encourage you to send it back down for more scrutiny.
Thank you.
And then Bree Cooper with Hy-Vee.
Bree Cooper, Director of Real Estate with Hy-Vee, fifty-eight twenty West Town Parkway, West Moina, Iowa. And I'm, I'm here because you've already heard about the development, you've already heard details about our project, but you really haven't heard a whole lot about us and who we are necessarily. So we've been committed to FDG and the village, worked through site plan details that you just talked about, took all of their recommendations from a staff level and put together this plan. And this is multiple iterations of the plan that you've seen. We've been here in Madison and the surrounding communities for ten years. Your friends and your family and your neighbors will become our employees and we are employee-owned. So to be part of this community, we are volunteers and we are sponsors of many charitable organizations or even just community organizations around town. We're proud to be sponsors of the Second Harvest Food Bank in the Madison Market. So we have three stores here. These are some of our sponsorships that we are a part of and would bring to the Village of Wannakee all of these as well. So the Second Harvest Food Bank, the All-City Swim Meet, the Madison Mallards Baseball Team, the American Family Insurance Pro-Am Golf Tournament that's here, the walks and the fun runs and the food drives that are happening throughout the communities every single week, every single month. And then as well as every single school that we have in those communities, elementary, middle, and high school, as well as the UW Badgers, we're big sponsors of all of those organizations, all of those programs come. We are looking to them to build those relationships and to be a part of that community. Corporately, we are bigger than just each market individually. We have a one-step program that we're very proud of, and I want to call that to your attention. It's one of the programs where we fund meals, wells, tree planting, and community gardens across the globe. So we're not just looking at what's happening right here in front of us, but it's everywhere. Not to, not to mention the disaster relief that we bring to Flint, Michigan, to the neighbors that we have in Nebraska and everyone else that needs help and assistance when we can. So we're here tonight to be a part of your community and ask you to help us bring that together and make that happen. So I'm here to answer any other questions.
Thank you.
Sit.
What is employee-owned? I never understood that.
Employee-owned is each one of our employees has a stakeholder in the business.
Stock or what?
Okay, so that would be, Danny, we're not going to go back and forth within the group. We need to keep it like this. If we'd like to ask the question later, like outside, we can absolutely do that, okay? Any else, anybody else for the public comment section? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Brian, give us our options for this evening.
Well, I mean, our, our position is still, I guess, that you don't take any action. I mean, I think if you have feedback on the preliminary plat, if you have feedback on the GDP, it would certainly be helpful to hear that. As Kevin mentioned, you know, we, we do need to, we're working on some agreements. We also have at the plan commission level next week, a presentation that's going to be made by Festival Foods. We also have zoning related to across the street. You know, when it comes to options, we heard some discussion tonight about whether, you know, grocery stores on both sides of the street. And without question, you have the ability to allow both of those things to move forward and let the market take, take care of it. I would, I, I do believe that two big boxes are different than other ordinary businesses. So I would also tell you that I believe from a planning standpoint and from a governmental power standpoint, you don't have to allow two. It's not like having a Burger King and a McDonald's across the street from each other. One of the things that I would advise is if we think we're going to have two grocery stores across the street, one, they are not common, but they are becoming more common, I would say, or at least there is one community in Dane County that has it, is a vacant building agreement that is designed to give the municipality a little bit more power than your standard nuisance or other building code, code provisions, if, if something were to hap, if you had two grocery stores across the street and one went out of business and because for big boxes, you can have graffiti, you can have issues with animals that get inside if it's not properly taken care of, you can have even worse things occurring on vacant properties. So I don't, I think that's entirely your decision as to whether or not you want it to move forward in that way, but I would, my, my one advice would be if you do envision having grocery stores across the street from each other, I would pursue that type of agreement with both of the entities.
All right, Brad, Kevin?
I think we heard some great comments from a, from a planner, and if we could get those in writing and share those, we'll share those with our planners and make sure those get answers before we bring it to the plan commission next Monday.
Okay, I think that's fair. Board members, any questions or comments? Susan?
This is a six, about a sixty thousand square foot grocery store? That's what we were told. It's not what you're doing in Sun Prairie, which is the smaller modified, and there's no chance of that happening.
Aaron, any questions, comments?
All right.
Phil?
I agree, everything is market-driven, and that grocery store in Sun Prairie is a healthy choice grocery store. It's an entirely different thing. But interestingly enough, I like the fact that we're going slow and patiently on this because if we would have jumped on the first plan we would have seen for this site, we'd be looking at a going-out-of-business sale for a Shopko over there right now.
I know what you're talking about. He's talking about several years back. Not, not right now. Danny, the public hearing's been closed.
I didn't get my question answered, but okay.
We, we still are discussing, so it might still get answered, okay? Joe, any comments?
I guess I would look to Kevin to speak a little bit as to, you know, why we're looking at a delay in the development agreement and that sort of thing. I don't think it's a big deal, but how long does it take to work through those things and that sort of?
I think we could be in a position in, by the next board meeting, if so directed.
Sorry, go ahead.
In addition to that, the vacant building agreement, I think, is definitely a critical piece if we're potentially looking at both stores. And then one other thing that I think I had mentioned to you is I'd like to see an elevation of what the Hy-Vee property will look like, and likewise, the Festival one, when we get around to that, what that will look like from Highway Q.
And we've requested that.
Yeah, given that there's kind of a drop-off.
Elevation issues, yeah.
Sam?
I don't have much. I mean, I am concerned about two grocery stores on opposite sides of the street. I just don't think aesthetically that's what we want as a village to have welcoming people into town, but people don't want goats on the edge of town either, probably, so.
That's in the town, not the village.
Right, sorry.
Bill?
I think I endorsed the agreements in the little story.
Anything yet?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think if we could get those comments and work with them, planning commission, a big thing, I've heard a lot of people, they want to be able to walk to the grocery store in this community, so we can make sure that we're doing the best we can to.
Okay. I would, I'll make my comments. We, we actually, I'm not, I'm sorry, I didn't write your name down, I wish I would have. Mark?
Mark, we actually did have grocery stores across the street from our, in Wannakee already. Our original was on Main Street, which some people think has a lot of traffic on it right now. They were right across from one another, and you'll know where the furniture store is and right across from it, we're both grocery stores. So we, we do have a precedence already for having grocery stores across the street in our community. They're both not there, by the way, but let's leave that. That's not us.
So you're saying there's precedence for the vacant building agreement?
So those were, those were smaller stores, but we also had a population on our side, I believe it was seventeen hundred and eleven. So very different than today in what the stores that are being built. You don't see stores that are that small generally in communities. So you hit it right on the head when you said two big box stores, that we haven't had a lot of, we haven't dealt with this on many occasions. And we do have two fine grocers that want to come in, and I'm, I'm excited for both of them. Are those the two best locations for two grocery stores? Maybe, maybe not. We're going to have to take that up. I think that, Mark? You had some excellent points that we'll talk with our planners about as well, and we can take this up at the plan commission again. I think the parking standards, it's unusual to hear in Wannakee for us to say we have too much parking anywhere. Generally, we don't have enough in a lot of spots. So that one, I struggle a little bit more with that, with that comment, but I'll leave it at that. Susan?
Just, we keep talking about big box and in my career, big box meant much bigger than sixty thousand. Sixty thousand is big box for us, but typically retailers that are big box are much bigger than that. Am I not right? I mean.
I believe.
But today, things are getting smaller. I know that grocery stores and everything that was building in those large sizes, even Shopko, who's going away, they went to a thirty thousand square foot concept, even Target did at one point, so anyway, it just, when we talk about it, I always kind of.
And I believe sixty thousand is for Hy-Vee. Festival is a little bit larger?
No.
Is that correct? In this situation?
Yeah, it's about sixty-five or sixty-something.
Or, Festival is, yeah, but the Hy-Vee on the west side is much bigger.
Right, I'm just talking about what we've been, we're kind of being presented with, so we have an idea there.
It's our market, right.
So it sounds like we'll be deferring this off to the next, to the plan commission next week.
You held your public hearing at the village board, so we'll, if so directed, we'll try and work with developer to have agreement for you within, within the next couple, at the next board meeting. We'll also be looking at the SIP, which goes into the grocery store with more detail and hopefully will address some of Mark's concerns that he's raised or make some adjustments.
Well, my last, I have one more comment, but go ahead.
I was going to say, I mean, I, at this point, I don't, I mean, we can put it on, but I don't think the SIP for Hy-Vee is on the agenda for Mon, next Monday, because we wanted to wait for the GDP to be finally approved. Now, we can do that though, if you want to. I mean, we can put the SIP on the agenda for Monday's plan commission meeting, even though we haven't formally approved the general development plan yet. And when I say SIP, I mean specific implementation plan, which is for the Hy-Vee lot, which is kind of a more targeted zoning document. We can certainly do that if, if you'd like. We wouldn't be in a position to approve it at the plan commission until the board approves the GDP.
Yeah. Because the general, the GDP is the general development plan, which is the general zoning document that govern, you know, in this case, is going to govern, if you look at the map, lots one and two, and then it's going to have some other language. You know, one of the things that we asked Forward Development Group to do, and, and they did this, was to tailor the general development plan off of the GDP that we have for Kill County Commons, which is just south of that. That general development plan for Kill County Commons does have a lot of information in it, and so there's a lot of information in the GDP that Forward has provided. I think some of the good comments that were made tonight by this individual regarding planning are appropriate for the GDP and some would probably be appropriate for the SIP. And I think that's where Kevin's hoping to get it, and then we can share it with Jason and Ed and get their thoughts on that. I mean, I, I would also say that I agree with Phil, that I think it's, and maybe he wasn't getting at this, but this process, even though it's been slower than, than some people would want, I think has really played out well for the village thus far. And, and I know that we've heard in the past that sometimes, and I don't agree with the comments that have been in the past, that the village goes too fast. I don't think that we're going too fast and I don't think that we're going too slow for these projects. I think we're going at the exact right pace. Okay, so one of the goals was to get this infrastructure done this year. With how you're laying that out, are we delaying or going too slow to get that accomplished this year? I, I mean, at, at, I, I don't think so. I don't think that we've heard that. I don't think that the, the document that we received from Forward Development Group before last week's village board meeting indicated that they would still be, I don't have it in front of me right now, but I believe it indicated that they would still be able to get the public improvements done, even if your approvals, your final approvals did not occur in April. I agree with Kevin that I think what we're looking at here right now is, is, is April fifteenth or May, I think it's May fir, whatever the first meeting is in May. You know, fundamentally, it's still, you know, you still have the ability to make a decision as to whether or not you want two grocery stores. I know that we, we've had, heard some comments tonight about, you know, not wanting the board to choose between the two. Again, as I've expressed before, I do think that there is a distinction here because of the size of the buildings that makes it a little bit different. One of the ways that we can deal with that is with a vacant building agreement. I, I think that you're going to end up making a decision on this by, by, at the latest, the first week in May. So I, and I don't think that that's too much of a delay based on the information that we've received. I'm looking at Dan, just because I want, I want his comment on that.
Yeah, it's getting close, I'll say that. There's still a lot of work to do. We've got plans that need to be finalized, construction drawings that need to be finalized, plans that need to be bid. The work needs to be scheduled. We've got contractors' schedules filling up already, so there's a lot of work to do. I think the schedule we laid out last week was still asking the board to take some action in April. So if the GDP is back to the village board April sixteenth, and if we can get consideration by the plan commission of some of the good comments that came up tonight, within that same timeframe, action on the GDP April sixteenth and final approval of the Hy-Vee's SIP as soon thereafter as possible. I think we're still in that window where we can commit to having that work done in 2019.
Well, I mean, I, a couple of, I mean, and I'm, I'm not disagreeing with Dan. I mean, at this point, the earliest that the SIP is going to get approved for Hy-Vee is going to be at the May Plan Commission meeting and Joint Plan Commission. Remember, the Joint Plan Commission is the body. So that still allows for the GDP to be approved at the first village board meeting in May, and then the SIP would be approved at the plan commission meeting and the Joint Plan Commission meeting. The other thing I would say is I think there's probably been a benefit to the developer as a result of their decision not to seek TIP, because now none of the construction work needs to be publicly bid. So I think that that probably makes that, the construction process easier for them. I don't want to, I just, I want to make sure that your options, from my standpoint, are open on whether it's the April meeting or the May meeting, because, you know, again, the last time that we talked about this, there seemed to be a little bit of a split on the board as to whether or not you, you wanted to have two grocery stores on the opposite side of the street. And if the answer to that question is, we don't care, we're going to let the market determine it, then we definitely push forward with, with Hy-Vee and, and with Forward Development Group as quickly as we can. If, if the thought process is, we, we're not sure if we want to have two grocery stores, then we necessarily need a little bit more time to analyze Festival so that staff can come to you and make a recommendation as to, you know, from our standpoint, if we have one, which, which project is more appropriate. And that's where I want to make sure, especially if, you know, I don't know where the board is at on this two grocery store issue, but if it is. but if it is, we only want, when you're looking at these two locations, we only want one, as opposed to two on both sides of the street, we, you know, I would say that April 15th is probably going to be pushing it. And the first meeting in May is going to be more appropriate.
So, that, that question is probably not appropriate for tonight to have discussion on?
I, I don't think so. No, it's not part of the agenda. We could put that on the agenda for the April 15th. And we can also then, I mean, one of the things that we talked about at the last meeting was putting the same, so, three meetings prior to this one, we had the same agenda item. That was kind of the discussion of the two projects. We definitely have the ability to put that on the agenda for the April 15th meeting, for you all to have your discussion. And if you determine as part of that discussion that you're okay with two different grocery stores, we can also have built into that agenda already some of the approvals for Hy-Vee. So that if you say, hey, two grocery stores are fine, then we can go on to the next agenda item on April 15th and deal with Hy-Vee. And if your thought process is, we want only one, then we would table those items.
All right, I, I'm, I'm good with that. I, I want to get the feelings of the rest of you. Joe? Sam?
Sure.
Susan? Bill? Yep, yep, okay. So, let's proceed that way.
Okay.
Is it appropriate for me, there was a question in regards to TIF in regards to the projects. Is it appropriate for me to comment on it?
Well, I mean, I, there isn't TIF associated with the project, so.
But is it appropriate because somebody, somebody brought it up during our public hearing with it? I just want to make sure it's appropriate.
I, I'm not really, I mean, we don't, it's, there's nothing about TIF on, on our agenda right now. I mean, because it was already taken off the table at the last meeting. So, I mean, I think, I, I, I don't really think, it, it's really not an appropriate comment related to the general development plan or the plat or the annexation, because TIF is no longer a part of the picture.
Okay, I just, I was going to try to accommodate, but I can't, yes?
Under uses, I said in the past that I don't want the use of a.
Yep.
Auto rental or service lot.
Yeah, just to be clear, the, the two, the two comments that we heard from the Plan Commission on the general development plan were, um, village staff had made a recommendation and the Plan Commission agreed that when it comes to lot one, uh, we're going to have the permitted uses of the grocery store and the convenience store. And then, as noted in the draft of the GDP, the, all of the different types of fueling and car washes that come along with the convenience store. And then for lot two, we'll have a broader range of commercial uses, but we did hear comments related to auto that we will talk to the developer about and remove those. Or at least some auto.
Yeah, lots of cars.
Okay. All right, everybody good? Move on?
Do we need a motion to defer or?
I don't think we need any motions.
We don't need a motion.
For this table for now.
So, our agenda for next, or two weeks, we'll just have discussion action on the rest of that.
Well, we're going to have, we're going to have essentially two items. Like, the first grocery store-related item is going to be the previous agenda item where you can have a discussion. And then depend, we're also going to have it laid out. So, if you want to move on to the, what is essentially the plat and the zoning and the annexation petition, and there'll actually be more, because there'll be agreements related to, uh, Hy-Vee, you'll have that ability to do so.
Okay.
Okay, are we good? Okay. Then we move on to our last public hearing. I have a public hearing and discussion action on. A request by Prohaska, 705 West Main Street to rezone from R2 Residential to C1 Commercial.
Todd's bringing up the map, but the request is to rezone a residential property to commercial zoning. And it's the area, as he brings up the map, it's near the area of, of the Big Little Wigley. It's on the north side of Highway 19. The, the Plan Commission supported changing that out to a C1, which seems appropriate. There's discussions with the, with the owners right now of redeveloping those two sites together. Staff is certain supportive of what the Plan Commission, uh, action took, taken.
Okay, then I'm going to open up the public hearing for this item. Adam, do we have anyone?
No.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address this? Since we don't have any papers in.
We can't hear you.
Is there, we have no public comments that were put in paper? So, I am asking if anybody else would like to comment before we talk about it. Okay, then I'm going to.
Oh, maybe. Maybe I would just like to say, I'd like to clarify. I didn't realize we have three minutes. I thought most people stand up here and talk for 15 or 20. But anyway, I'd like to clarify about that, that, uh, what you call it here, Festival on being open 24 hours a day. And all the noise that would be coming from there all night long and the people that live across the street. And also, that years ago, when we did all this, it was not done with TIF. There was a TIF, but we didn't use it. And we never had a debt. Your 14 million looks pretty big to me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I, I, I just have a question on this. Is this that same area we were talking about before with the building on the marsh? This is the same to rezone it? Or I can't read the.
This?
No, it's not, okay.
Is that, there's the grocery store on C2?
Grocery store.
Is that on C1?
Oh, okay. All right, I'm sorry.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Board members, comments on this? Go ahead, Susan.
One of the things is the zoning under C1, what the variety is. I don't have it in front of me.
Well, it, it is, I mean, I think, so, I would want to say about maybe six months, eight months ago, the, the lot, that's the C1 lot there, was an, a residential lot. And we, we rezoned it.
Commercial, I just want it, that's a very broad category of definitions again. And would we want to narrow it? Do we all understand what can be allowed? Given traffic in and out.
I thought we made it, there were some conditional uses attached to the C1. It wasn't a really, a real broad one.
Well, no, so, I mean, my, there are conditional uses that are associated with C1. But then I also agree with Sue that there are, it is a broad range of commercial uses that are identified, that are permitted for C1. I, I don't believe that we put any restrictions on the lot to the east when it was rezoned C1. My, I mean, my understanding is that there's a, a, that we're anticipating a proposal that those two lots would be combined, and it's going to be one development. But obviously, there's no guarantee that that's going to happen, so.
I think it's important people understand what the definitions are when they see the rezoning, so they understand it. And they're not surprised later. That's my point.
Agreed.
So, yeah.
Okay. Any questions, board members, comments? Do we know what's being proposed here potentially? Has that discussion taken place?
I thought it was.
I think anything that would be appropriate in the C1, it, it, you know, there's a big range of commercial uses in that C1, uh, from apartment buildings to anything that's allowed in, uh, the general commercial of, of Wannakee.
There's no specific proposal where we're.
There is no, we have not received that proposal.
That's my question.
Oh, maybe I misspoke, then I'm sorry. I thought that at least there was some discussion. Did I take back what I said?
There's questions about it, but that, no proposal, no, no site plans, and nothing that we've seen that, that's been in.
Apartments are allowed in C1?
Apartments are permitted use in C1.
So, why are they bringing this to us now? Are they putting it on the market, or why is it being?
Property is for sale. On Dave Prohaska, 705 West Main Street, property is for sale. There's a contingency in there. We have an offer to purchase, provided it gets changed to C1. So, that's, there is nothing proposed for development or anything like that. We just have an offer to purchase with a contingency that it changes as well.
I kind of think it'd be the fair thing to do to rezone this to C1. The, the property owner's kind of trapped out there in an area that changed and changed and changed and changed. And now he's got his single-family home that's right there. It's the only one there. Everything else around him is something else. And if, if we could match it, the two properties together, it'd be a big enough property that something reasonably could be done.
So, I think the, the main point I can, I can make is that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Yes, in our package, Jason, Jason made that very clear.
And I agree, it should be changed. I wouldn't want to be R2 sitting out there on a island, no.
I think you just made a motion.
Move approval that we change from this site to, from, uh, R2 to C1.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Bill Random, second by Phil Williams.
Another question before we go down that road.
Sure.
Go ahead, Joe.
The area to the west and north of that. Now, that's the, uh, space that the village is, is acquiring, or?
Part of it.
But, um.
The marsh area.
The marsh area that's there, right?
The heritage, well, that heritage.
Yeah, that could be a village park.
Okay. Is there any concern with putting this to commercial? If that becomes a park, I can't imagine there would be, but want to make sure that that's out there.
No.
I don't, I don't think so. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
Just, just for the sake of the, uh, anybody in the area that knows the, what we've been doing with the Heritage Land Trust Group. By park, what we're really talking about is natural area preservation.
Conservancy type.
Open, conservative, right?
Not it.
Good point, Todd. Did everybody hear that? About that? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have got a motion and a second. Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, ayes have it. Next, we've got license permits, discuss and take action on operator license applications for Heidi J. Noble, Joshua M. Crum, and Joshua Guyatt.
Staff recommends approval of operator license applications for Heidi Noble, Joshua M. Crum, and Joshua Guyatt, subject to successful completion of an approved responsible beverage server training course interview by the Wannakee Le, Wannakee Police Department.
So, moved.
Motion by Joe Zitzelberg, second by Sam Bowig. Any comments?
You want to change?
Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, ayes have it. Under new business, we have discuss and take action on easement agreement between the Village of Wannakee and Kill Kenny Farms.
So, this is somewhat related to, it's, it's not, the development that we talked about earlier, the Steve Brown Apartments development. This easement here is not related to the sidewalk discussion that we've had. The, it is related to the fact that there are certain public utility facilities that are located out of the easement area identified on the plat. And so, we've been, and, and that was, the, the current property owner and Wannakee Utilities and other utilities had, had worked on that. I mean, it was, it was, they worked together on the location. So, where they're located is where we wanted them to be and where the property owner wanted them to be. They happen to be outside of the easement that's identified on the plat. So, this agreement is intent, is intended to deal with, uh, those facilities that are outside the public utility easement on the plat. I can certainly answer any questions that you have. The only change that I would make is, um, approve the easement agreements, um, subject to final review and approval by the village engineer, the village attorney, and the Wannakee Utilities General Manager, as we are still working through some issues on that, but on the easement document, but we will not fundamentally change it.
Board members, questions? If you don't understand it? Or I look for a motion?
Move approval of the easement agreement.
With Brian's caveats?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Susan Springman, second by Phil Williams. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, ayes have it. Discuss and take action on Westbridge Phase 6 developers agreement.
Including your packet was the developers agreement for Westbridge Phase 6, which is the final, uh, phase for, uh, Westbridge. Brian has drafted it and worked with the developers attorney. And at staff level, we would recommend approval.
Numbers one through five are all documented in here and approved. Numbers one and five are all documented and approved in here, and, uh, we're just moving on to Phase 6.
It's all consistent.
All consistent.
I vote approval.
Motion by Susan Springman, second by Bill Random. Call, uh, any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, ayes have it. Discuss and take action on notice of claim from Madison Environmental Resource Inc. Todd, do you want to give any background?
Yeah, I, I'm happy to. The, there's a, a business in the Business Park. It, hyphenated as Mary, Madison Environmental Resource Inc. They, they recycle medical waste essentially in Sharps. Sharps container, um, items and stuff like that. But they don't recycle it, they turn it into waste and incinerate it. But they've filed a claim against the village to, uh, receive back their 2018 taxes paid. Their argument being that, um, they are, they should be assessed as tax-exempt or, or classified as tax-exempt. The village assessor disagrees and believe that it is taxable, so that's the point of argument that we're in. So, there's a, a claim, uh, that's been filed.